I will call the order of the work session meeting for Dayton City Council June 11th.
You have to read the one item on there. There's a paper top one, I believe.
So I have to actually read this?
Yeah, you actually have to read that. Yep.
Alright. Alright, I will note for the record that notice was given that Councilmember Henderson is participating in this work session meeting via interactive technology, which is allowed by Minnesota's Minnesota statute, section thirteen D oh two. The address for his location was included in the notice and is open and accessible to the public.
Thank you very much. Travis, can you turn your camera on? Jason, thank you. Possible. If not, I can get started and you can try to figure that out as we go.
It says you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it. I can barely hear you guys too.
He's gonna try to crank the mics up, I think a little bit.
I got, I got some volume now.
Alright, beautiful.
I can, it says you cannot start your video because the host has stopped it, so.
Okay. Alright, we'll figure that out.
Yeah, I don't think we need that, do we?
Okay, as long as you're here, this is the main thing, so. Good evening. Okay, perfect. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Welcome to the first budget work session for the 2025 budget. I'm, I'll go through my slides as quickly as I possibly can, and then we can have discussion at the end. Again, I expect this to take roughly five to ten minutes. Just as a quick reminder, everybody, that the tax rate is derived from the levy and the tax capacity. The levy is the actual dollars that are received by the city, and the city has to request those additional dollars. And those happen in December, typically the first meeting in December. Tax capacity is all property values within the city of Dayton or within the boundaries of the city overall, and those two combined together equal the tax rate. So the tax rate is the result of the above two, not a item that is derived from either one of them. They have to have both items to get the tax rate. I've given this example before, but it's been a couple of years, so I figured I'd just revise it just to make sure everyone is aware. So I used a city of example and said that they put up seven hundred homes in the previous year and two new commercial businesses. Their average home value is five hundred thousand dollars. Here's some information roughly of what the year tax rate was. So the year one tax rate when it began the process was forty percent and a four million dollar levy of the actual dollars received by the city. The tax capacity was ten million dollars. So the average home bill was two thousand dollars, and that's just derived by simple math. In scenario one, so I give three scenarios of what could possibly happen with the next year as in year two. No tax levy increase, which means no more additional dollars are coming into the city. The tax rate would drop to twenty percent. The levy in the year two would still be four million dollars. But the tax capacity would be twice as much, and again, I'm using round easy numbers for everybody to understand. That's twenty million. So the average home tax bill in year two was a thousand dollars. Scenario two is some tax levy increase, which would mean that, okay, now cities of example is bringing in five million dollars. And the tax capacity is still twenty million in year two. Tax rate will be twenty-five percent, and the average home bill would be twelve fifty. Again, this is just for the city of example. Again, that is a decrease from the average home tax bill in the first year. If the levy matches the growth, and they're not a one-to-one ratio, but they're close, tax levy received, for example, would be eight million dollars. Tax capacity is still twenty million, but the tax rate would remain the same, which means everyone's tax bill for their house would be the exact same. In this scenario, the home value does not change, which is the one thing that we don't have control over. I want to make sure everyone knows we have no control over home values. That's the county, but that's something that we can't control. But if your home value stays the same, those are rough examples. Breakdown of the levy. So where do we start at today and what does it mean for next year? So the 2024 tax rate is the same as it was in twenty-three, which is thirty-five point six four percent. Each one percent of levy change, so if we were to change the levy by one percent, that means seventy-nine thousand dollars received, whether that's additional or less for the year. And that one percent of tax levy equals point three three percent change in the tax rate. And every one percent of levy means about eighteen dollars or a dollar fifty a month for each home in Dayton. Again, the average home is roughly five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
In this scenario?
Nope, in, that's in us, for example, for the city of Dayton. The average home value is five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So what happened from twenty-four to twenty-five? So as everyone received their valuations in the twenty-four tax bill, you would already also received a valuation notice that said what your house value will be in twenty-five. With the additional growth and the change in market values overall, the tax capacity changed, and these are updated as of June third. So these are very, very recent numbers. The tax capacity increase is sixteen point one eight percent or three point seven five three million dollars. And those are updated as of June third. Roughly, and I did not put this in the slide, but just as a rough number, fourteen point two percent of that is new growth. That's new items that came in line. That's commercial mostly, as you can see, the big changes about two million dollars change in commercial industrial. A lot of that is related to the commercial industrial increases we've seen on the south side of Dayton. The proposed budget of the preliminary levy breakdown after department directors and myself have sat down and discussed things overall is roughly eighteen point two two percent. That is what we've come up with as directors and need direction from council from this point on to figure out what is the best option for residents overall. We are going to focus specifically on the general fund or the seven hundred ninety-two thousand dollar increase-decrease tonight. However, there, the other increases that are in those numbers, so the three hundred thousand in capital equipment, the fifteen thousand in park capital, the thirty thousand in capital facilities, and the three hundred thousand in pavement management, were all directed from the long-term plan that happened last year that was approved by council. So those are what was anticipated in the long-term plan overall for the city. So those are also increased in the numbers that you see for the eighteen point two two, but those numbers, we're not going to discuss them unless you have specific questions on those numbers. We will work on those during the long-term plan if you have any major changes with those at this point, at this point. We'll focus specifically on the general fund. I wanted to show a graph to you to show what's happened over the last few years with us. I've shown this before. The black line is the tax capacity or overall tax availability. If the tax rate was a hundred percent, that's how many dollars the city would be able to bring in. And the blue and green lines are the dollars received for what purpose. The general levy is majority or ninety percent of it, ninety-five percent of it, and the small portion is that two hundred and ten thousand dollar debt service. That debt service is related to the PD and public works facility that we put up in twenty sixteen. That is a twenty-year bond, just as a reminder. Fibers of historical data, so this just goes back to kind of show you what's happened. And the left graph relates to the right graph, but the right graph and the tax rate number is the derivative or the answer after you take the two numbers on the left. So each year, I'm gonna remove this little thing here best I can. Each year on the left, you'll see a blue and a red line. The blue line is the tax capacity change, and the red line is the tax levy change. So every time there's a tax levy change, that's more dollars coming into the city. If the red line is higher than the blue line, then you will see a increase in property taxes or property tax rate. If they are less than, typically, you'll see a decrease. So as you see decreases on the left or on the right graph, they come from the left-hand graph. You see twenty-two, it went down to about three percent. That's the change on the left-hand side graph in twenty-two from fifteen percent or sixteen percent tax capacity change and only a seven percent levy change. You see the big decrease happened in twenty-three. That was when we had over a thirty-three percent tax capacity change and only a four percent levy change. The reason why that four percent levy change happened is also because we redirected dollars from a bond to reallocate towards operations, so that helped significantly. We didn't add more dollars to the levy. We just repurposed those dollars.
It was a bond, and it was also, I think, the remainder that COVID.
Part of it was also the COVID dollars. That is correct.
We still, yeah.
ARPA dollars, that's correct. Those ran out in twenty-five, so that'll come into conversation here tonight. Yes?
I thought Travis was trying to say something.
Travis, are you saying something?
No, I was not.
Okay. So as you can see.
So you're saying in twenty-three, we use one-time funds to offset reoccurring costs?
That is correct. Yep. So twenty-three, we used half of one-time cost to offset ongoing expenses, which you'll see that coming off in twenty-five.
I believe those are also for, there was some capital expenditures which were one-time expenses.
Those were, yep, so half of those went to the electrical line that fed the well, well, house on full. That was three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, the one-time costs.
Yep.
So we took half, half of the total dollars, which was seven twenty-ish, half of them went towards operations, and we split those into two halves, so one in twenty-three, one in twenty-four. And then the other half went to that electrical line and wellhouse form. So the proposed, again, tax rate increase is a thirty-six point oh six percent from thirty-five point six four, so roughly a point four two percent increase in the tax rate with the numbers that were provided in the first screen. What does that mean for a homeowner? So I always provide this slide just to show you, again, these don't take into consideration any value changes in your house, but the average one, again, would go from eighteen ninety-three to nineteen fifteen, a roughly a twenty-two dollar or twenty-two dollars a year increase in your property tax levy, which is roughly a dollar eighty-three a month. And obviously, that goes up as your house value gets higher. The change from year to year goes higher as it gets higher. I provided more numbers higher because we have seen a higher, a higher number of houses that are above five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over the last few years.
Back to that last.
This one?
No, that comment you made about the, so the one-time money was the COVID money. The bond money wasn't one-time.
No, the bond money was not. No, sorry, the ARPA dollars that were received from the federal government in twenty-three, we used for one-time dollars. That's correct. The bond money was not. Comparative data, as we like to look around, I did change these up this year. I just used neighboring communities because I felt like it was more appropriate than comparing to communities that were the similar market value as us. As we're always comparing to our neighbors. Each one of those graphs represents the tax rates that happened in the neighboring communities of the last five years. As you can see, we're roughly right on par with Rogers, slightly lower than Champlin, and slightly lower than Corcoran.
They're significantly lower than Corcoran.
Yeah, about six percent lower than Corcoran.
Thank you.
Yep. Here's the breakdown. Rogers does have the fact that they have a lot of commercial industrial offsetting a lot of their taxes, so they probably bring in a lot more tax dollars as in levy. But those are offset with those commercial industrials. You can see that blue line on the top graph significantly higher for Rogers. And as you all can see, the Champlin one is significantly higher in residential, too. They have a much larger tax base when it comes to residential. The bottom one, the only one I added in there was Maple Grove. Everyone kind of compares this to Maple Grove or says, you know, whatever, we're near Maple Grove, so why not look at it? I feel like it's a very much of an anomaly, but I did put it on the graph just because it's so high that their market value is over ten trillion dollars, or ten, sorry, ten billion dollars.
Yeah, and they have a massive amount of commercials.
Massive amount of commercials. So I did throw it on there just to kind of show a difference between the four communities around us and then Maple Grove. It's kind of its own state, basically. I'm even going to talk about quickly with the major changes. There are two slides of major changes that happened, both down, down and up, so there was some adjustments around. Overall, so I'm going to touch base on them, then we can have conversation of those at the, at the end here, and all the department directors are here to answer any questions. But Activity Center, an increase of forty-six grand, and I'm gonna use round numbers here when I'm talking. Those are mostly related to changing the recreation coordinator position from being a part-time twenty-hour-a-week position to a thirty-two-hour-a-week position. What that would mean is that we would add benefits to her package for being here as an employee. She's done a fantastic job, and we would like to continue to see those recreation programs take off. So that's most of that forty-six thousand dollar change. City clerk, there were some changes in the current salaries and benefits. Also, with some of the salaries of a reallocation for the twenty-twenty-four planner position that we had planned out for. We use, we use those to reallocate dollars in order to hire a basically individual to be able to handle a bunch of different things, which has been Kelly, who's sitting right next to me here. She handles just a bunch of different stuff and is backup for a lot of things, and she's been a great asset, so. Those changes are just, again, they're not adding dollars. They're just reallocating them, so. If you want the breakdown of actual new dollars, I'd have to break that out differently because it's difficult for me to just run really quick numbers and say this is what it is for new numbers because it's a relocation from the planner position from the planning department to now other departments that she's actually working in. If you want those numbers, I can really do my best to reallocate where the budget was. It's a pain.
I just noticed on here, there's that question, and also the planning department, we're adding fifty-nine K, but.
Yep.
We're not paying for land, uh, land farm.
We are not paying for land farm.
So I didn't see that as a subtractor, and that was kind of.
Yeah, so I will get to the planning department, and the reason why you're seeing a fifty-nine thousand dollar change is likely because, and I'll skip down to the planning department because we just went that way, so. As an aside, but that is a new associate planner position. We're looking to hire mid-year.
So it's half a wage?
Correct. Correct. That's most of that. So the eighteen thousand one ninety is a subtraction from the previous year's planner budget. This is why it's really hard to follow. It's because we budgeted for a planner role. We didn't use that planner role. We used them in different departments. And then now we're going to add in a half a person for the whole year, so there's only a slight increase in the salaries and wages overall for the position.
That we just brought one in.
We did. We are going to hire one, looking to hire one tonight. We are looking to hire an associate planner. It's like a low-level one right out of high, or right out of college, I mean, to be able to train them up to be able to be an associate planner.
We had two at one point in time, and then we lost them all, right?
We did.
This year.
In twenty-three, we had two.
Okay, and then twenty-four, we lost them.
Yep.
For not, for not John-related issues, just to be clear.
Correct. Yep.
So this will bring us back to two.
This will bring us back to two.
And it'll be somebody right out of school.
They'll be right out of school, yes. So we essentially are looking at bringing them in at the lowest or lower wages than paying somebody with a little more experience.
So the, the person we're looking to approve hiring tonight is already in the budget?
Yes, that is already in the budget.
Open position.
That is an open position.
And the one you're talking about up here is, is a new full-time position that gets hired mid-year of next year?
That is correct. And this, the planner one is the hardest one to follow because we reallocated dollars for a position. Overall, in the general fund, it doesn't matter where you put the dollars. It's all out of the same fund, but it changes, changes it from departments. So it makes it difficult to follow, and I totally understand that. I thought about that as I was putting this together. I said I don't have time to put it, to actually run the numbers through what it looks like, but I can run that together and send it off to the council this week if I get a chance to.
Nets out the same.
It nets out exactly the same. The, like I said, the dollars either go from city clerk to planning to inspections to finance to, there are, Kelly's kind of a backup for everything, so she's in.
We have a floater, so basically you just take her wages and divide it amongst government departments she has, and we assume she spends approximately that much time in all these departments, so.
You got it. Exactly. Elections, decrease of thirty-five thousand. There's no election next year, so that'll take away a lot of those dollars. Finance Department, increase of fifty-four thousand, that is.
Sorry, for the elections, instead of decreasing us budgeting thirty-five thousand this year or for next year, and then increase for the following year, why don't we just make it seventeen-five every year so it just stays a constant number? So we're always planning for it.
The reason we've always done that this way is because it's hard to track dollars once they're back in the fund balance number. So essentially, we're budgeting for, and we're budgeting for a surplus one year and then budgeting for a deficit the next year. It's hard to follow the dollars when we have ups and downs in the budget. I mean, I can do that. That's fine, but it seems to be, it's small enough dollars where it isn't like a huge change in the budget overall, and typically, there's enough ebbs and flows that we're able to make it work.
It's small. I was just curious. If we have something where it's like every year we pay for it, why not just tax evenly for it every year?
I can understand your question. I get it. I just, this is how we've always done it, just because it's hard to track it. Once it goes into fund balances, it doesn't roll over from year to year on those line item budgets. They go to zero, and then they raise back up to the budget number and then go to zero.
Thank you.
Finance Department, again, this is related to relocation of Kelly. There's part of my salaries in there. There's the accountant salaries increases. There's the accounting technician salary increases. Part of the admin assistant, there's a lot of individual positions that are in finance, little bits and pieces, but no added positions in finance is being proposed.
What is it, credit card fees? Are those for?
Credit card fees. So right now, we currently cover all credit card fees for people who pay utility bills with credit cards.
Including AMEX?
Including AMEX.
Have we thought of, so like, the DMV won't take AMEX, because AMEX has higher interchange rates and everyone else it's significantly higher. And interchange rates will shift now to the point that the federal government's looking at getting involved in how they, how they do it. I, I mean, I don't know.
It's a significant undertaking for us. We paid roughly thirty-five thousand dollars last year in credit card fees for the city.
And I think having the option to pay with a card somewhat makes sense because that's what everyone has these days. I'm not knocking that. I just, I know AMEX is incredibly expensive compared to everyone else, which.
We can elect to pass the fees on to residents, but we figured it'd be less advantageous for them to take on their own fees, but we can do that if we'd like to. It's a, it's a hit to the budget, for sure. Roughly in the two and a thirty grand, thirty-five thousand dollars, roughly.
You don't know what the portion of AMEX is for that?
I don't, but I could, we could probably figure it out.
Say, isn't it usually like two and a half percent or something like that? I know when I go to the DMV, it's usually, they, they pass that on to.
Yeah, most card companies, it's between two and a half to three percent, but AMEX tends to be higher. It's like three and a half to four, which is why they pay better rewards to their members. It's because they're basically dinging the person that's chart, that you're charging your card at.
Yep. So we could talk about that. That is one item that we can most certainly discuss as a council. I don't know if there's ever been, Amy and I were discussing this, we were putting the budget together. I don't know if we've ever had a discussion with council about what to do.
Why don't we just build it back into the water fun, into the price?
That's what you're saying. We could charge residents back.
We just charge residents back.
Or we, because for the resident that doesn't use a credit card and someone else pays a check.
It just seems like it's, that's more messy, but I know.
It, I don't think there's a great answer. Either way, again, it's kind of a pick one, and that's what we're gonna go with.
I mean, to me, if we're spending thirty-five K on the water fund processing bills.
What percent of the, what percent of the bills are paid with a card versus?
More now. I don't know what the exact dollar.
I mean, it's in the percentage, because the percentage is like forty percent, then it seems offsetting. If the, if the percentage is eighty percent, then pay with a card. Which is my guess. That'd be my guess, too, but we can get the data pretty easy.
We have pushed significantly to go online if people pay online with their utility bills and be able to, instead of processing payments up in the front.
Yeah.
I mean, they could still do that.
I mean, it doesn't matter. Also pay, they could also process that through a check, calendar, whatever.
Correct.
When you pay your, your, your taxes.
Yep, utility bill or auto pay, or yep.
Yeah, I think that'd be worth looking at. I mean, no, again, these seem small, but these thirty-five thousand a year starts adding up, you know, same with the election. It all starts adding up, so. Last year, we came really close, so I'd rather find ways to change these and just say.
So we can mostly have a conversation with the council if you'd like to have further conversation about how we handle those. Yep.
Most or all?
I would say ninety percent of them. I mean, there's some that obviously come in and pay for building permits if they have a small amount. They can pay online with building permits if they have like a deck fee or. We don't take anything over two thousand dollars. That's the, that's the cutoff. Anything over two grand, like for building permits, like a house, they don't, we can't pay with those card. Anything under two thousand dollars is what's paid for by credit card. So those roughly thirty-five thousand dollars last year. Assessment services. So we approved this at the last meeting. I'm not sure if anybody caught it, but that's, the county's now covering assessment services, which was a hundred ninety-five thousand dollars.
That was a big change.
That's a huge chunk of dollars, and that actually offsets the loss of revenue we have from the ARPA one-time dollars that happened over the last two years that we discussed earlier in the meeting, so. Good timing. Engineering, legal, recycling, we've all seen the increase in those just based on current trends. Those are broken down underneath, twenty-five for engineering, thirty-two for legal, and twenty-two, five for recycling. Recycling one, you will likely see continue to increase as we've heard more about organics being required in Hennepin County. And the rough estimate cost currently, I don't know when it's going to be implemented, is roughly sixty dollars a house.
A month?
A month.
What?
For organics recycling.
And they have to do it?
And they are, they are requiring us to do it in Hennepin County. That is correct.
Does that also fall under that zero waste of landfill stuff that might be coming down the line, too?
That's correct. You got it. So that's the rough cost.
Do we have a contract, we're like, we have a contract with Republic, right? And how long is the contract good for?
Two more years.
And is there a price increase built on that? I don't remember. I was asking. Okay, I assumed there was. That's where you got the twenty-two thousand five.
Five or six percent. It's nothing, nothing huge, but it's enough because we have.
Well, that's where you get the twenty-two five, I'm guessing.
Yep, you got it. So like I said, we don't have that now, but I just want to make sure everyone's aware of it, that it will be coming down the line, and I'm not sure if we want to hold that contract or if we want to have the residents pay those individually. That's up to us to make a, you know, conversation later on.
With the organics.
Correct. That's correct. Again, it's not this year, but it's in the future.
Yep.
I have a question about the organics and the zero waste landfill. Zach or Amy, either one of you, have you heard of like, is there any cities that are correlating together to tackle this as far as like in Hennepin County or? Because I know like at General Mills, we have the initiative to do zero waste of landfill, but we're doing it with like contract, like a contract service, like Mountain Environmental. They're the ones like driving the pieces for it, and they just basically just give us the price and what we can and cannot do. Or if there's anything like you guys knew about that. I know it's not necessarily budget discussion, but as we start thinking about like this stuff, and it's, it's gonna land in our life at some point, you know, what is it gonna look like when it does?
Yep. It sounds like twenty thirty is the required year for organics to be required. So Hennepin County is talking about going countywide with a recycling and organic service overall to eliminate or kind of go on your piggyback question, Councilmember Henderson, on how to handle the cost increases, but we have not heard anything from them overall. They might open up their own department.
Yeah, I'd be very curious to see how they're gonna handle it, too.
So, yeah, it is. Yep, it is. Inspection Department, so I want to get back on track here a little bit. Inspection Department, that's a reallocation again of dollars, but part of that inspection department and planning department increases is related to that new position. Rough cost of the new position, I think, is forty thousand for a half a year for salaries and benefits for that associate planner position. And that's a rough number. It's, it could be thirty-eight, it could be forty-three, five, I don't, somewhere around forty thousand.
So is this something under planning? I don't.
Yes.
Recall seeing inspection department as a separate.
So it is, it is a separate department. We've always had a separate inspection department that is related to building permits overall. So the reason why this position would be put into inspections is because they're going to be the ones reviewing it for zoning code to make sure they've got the right setbacks, they have the right spacing, they're meeting all the plat requirements.
So this is plan review, not physical inspections?
Correct. Although inspections department overall does relate to Metro West. We pay Metro West out of the inspections department. There is a separate department that we do have for inspections specifically, and the reason being is because we have so many building permits, it was almost required that we had our own inspection department instead of underneath planning overall as a general. That has been there for a while. However, the percentage of that individual's broken out, I think it's eighty-five, eighty-five fifteen or seventy-five twenty-five between planning and inspections, as in they'll mostly be doing inspections on fences, decks, new house builds, setbacks, so on and so forth. These are the main big ones here after this. IT, so part of this big increase in IT is that we're looking to change our software hosting from being here on the server to being in the cloud for our BSNA software that hosts our building department, general ledger, accounts payable, invoicing, payroll, all of those items. It costs us money every single year to provide those services if we went online. It also allows us to be able to access those softwares from not being just in the building, but being able to access those when we're out in the field. So like Marty's guys could access it from their phone or a tablet they already have. We could have the inspections group, the Metro West group currently has computers or tablets right now that they do inspections on. They have to then upload those twice a month, and then they're added into our actual software so we can see the inspectors that have been completed. This would allow them to do that simultaneously, so literally momentarily, we'd be able to see an inspection done, so if somebody calls on an inspection being done, we'd be able to see it almost immediately.
So it seems like about every couple of years, we, we get this.
Yep.
This software is going to save us money.
I don't know if it'll save us money. This one's not going to save us money.
Okay.
This is going to save us time and ability to access information.
Well, time is money.
So, yes.
I don't know. I.
This is, like I said, this is a request for twenty-five. Again, these are all things we could talk about and discuss. Something that staff feels would be nice to have. Again, it's something that's could be good. Again, time is money, which you mentioned, but, um.
How often does an inspection happen and then someone calls? Excuse me, ask about.
I'd have to defer to the admin assistant who handles all those calls, but I'm going to order, order John. Do you know how, how often it happens where somebody's calling before we have the inspection actually in the books? It's, it's, it's roughly every two to three weeks.
Cause they get a copy of inspection, right? When they're, they're home.
It's left.
Yeah, it should be left.
So the person should, because I, I don't, we had ours, like they left us a copy of it. So I assume the person that has what they need to.
I would presume so, but that doesn't mean that the contractor isn't talking to the homeowner. It's the homeowner who then call and then says, hey, I don't have an inspection document done. Again, I don't know how often it happens, but.
And is that sixty-nine thousand or the, or the sixty-four, five hundred?
Yep.
There, is that a one-time charge to do it?
Part of that is one-time charges.
Cause there should be implementation. So how much of is the ongoing subscription to use the web-based service? It's like ten thousand or is it fifty thousand?
Think it's roughly thirty thousand dollars a year. Half the cost is annual and half the cost is one-time costs. That's correct.
Yeah, I assumed it was a mixture of both. I'd, I'd be curious to learn more about what, like I know time's the benefit, but I'm having a hard time seeing.
Benefit is.
Yeah, like.
Yeah.
Like where's the time crunch need? Is this like slowing down people? Is this, because again, I think they're leaving paper copies behind. So the, the residents should have what they need then to, so yep, it's done.
It's not, yeah, it's not just billing department. I mean, that's a big thing of it, but also part of it is just being able to access information from the web and not having to be on a separate computer or to be on the server. So if to VPN in, you could just log into the internet and do it on any computer really, um, as long as you're.
Who's hosting that?
They would host it. So that's, that's the thing is that they're whole, currently we are hosting in, in our.
BSNA software hosted on their own servers. They don't even use like Google, Google or, or AWS. I said, there's no way they, they're using one of the, probably the two, maybe three biggest one, but AWS and Google are the large ones. It's Google. Okay. So at least it's secure.
It's not, it's not, it's not, yes, hosted here. Well, right now it's currently hosted in the server room.
Yeah, it's hosted yet. It's hosted in a server room in another part of the world, basically. Yeah, but then they're paying for that. How much annual maintenance do we spend on our servers today? How about this?
I think it's roughly seven thousand dollars a year we pay for.
So I think this is an, we should, I would say, I don't know if anyone else, because we should talk more about.
Good.
And get better understanding of what that really looks like and some of the benefits we think it will drive.
Some of it is the website too. So we're looking at making our website more user friendly because currently you have to be a coding expert to do our website on the backend of things. And we have one person who's, why is that? Cause we use WordPress. WordPress is very code enforced. Basically you have to know coding in order to run the website behind the scenes. That was a decision made prior to myself. I don't know when that was. Marty may know more.
What we did the previous, um, update of the website was done at that time.
You know what year that was?
Oh, God. It's got to be around, it was about twenty nineteen, somewhere in that, say like three or four.
So five years ago.
So how much of the sixty-four thousand is for the B, BSNA software? How much of it's for the website?
I think it's twenty, I guess, uh, rough numbers again. I think it's twenty grand for BSNA, about ten thousand dollars for initiation on the website. Cause we already pay costs to have the website, annual costs and those annual costs aren't going up.
Yeah.
It's just initial move over and transfer over and everything. So I think it's roughly ten grand for the website, twenty thousand for BS and enemies are rough numbers here. And then thirty thousand for annual on BSA.
And this is all based on the eighteen point two-two percent increase.
Yep, this is, everything's in the eighteen point two-two. That's correct. Um, we'll ta, we'll touch base on that one. So I'll note that one ahead and we'll make sure we touch base on that one again.
Uh, maybe, does anyone else agree? Is it just me that has questions on this one?
I'm hearing at least one more, so.
Oh, I think we have questions on a few. And this is one of them. I, I.
I'm most certainly kind of, kind of set time.
Every couple of years, like I said, it's, this software is going to save us blah, blah, blah. And, and I, I don't know. I. If, if, if anything, it seems like some of this we could put into development costs. I mean, if this is, if this, the bulk of this is wrapped around, you know, inspection services, that's part of what we provide for.
Most certainly. Some of it most certainly is related to that. I don't know what the percentage is, but we can definitely figure that out. Police, uh, increase of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand. The current employees is a hundred fifty-four thousand, five oh two. This does include the other half of the officer that was budgeted for in twenty twenty-four. So we hired that individual. They need to pay for the rest of their, um, salary since they are hired on. That's part of the hundred fifty-four thousand. Additional to that, um, the chief is looking for two additional hires, one hired at the beginning of the year and one hired at mid-year. Um, this has seemed to be a good process. Overall, we get one person that's younger and able to come in and it's a lower rate, but right out of, right out of college. And that ref cost is two hundred and fifteen thousand, nine forty-eight. Contract services, I broke this one out specifically to let everyone know that forty thousand dollars of the increase is related to the Flock system. That is being recommended by the EDA to have, um, more secure areas where businesses are at. That's a rough cost of forty thousand dollars in total. It's a breakdown by cameras. I don't remember how many they are.
So how many cameras does that get us?
I don't remember.
I think it's ten.
Ten.
Okay.
Ten cameras for the forty thousand dollars.
Is that a one-time charge or annual?
Annual, annual.
And if it breaks, who covers, who's, where's the warranty at?
Probably down.
So Flock covers the warranty on anything except, um, like if a vehicle hits it or, um, something like that happens. Any weather or anything like that, Flock repairs it for free. And it's an annual cost of three thousand per camera per year. And then there's, depending on what kind of pole for installation, it's anywhere from a hundred and fifty to six hundred and fifty per camera.
So that is in the police request for four twenty-nine, eight thirty. The other dollars are related to wellness program, increasing that. Um, that is also part of the, um, K nine program that we're looking, that we're implementing currently. So that'll be cost to have the K nine, contract services as well, and then insurance.
And, uh, does the one fifty-four, Paul, does that include your seventy-seven, five incentive program?
No, no, it doesn't because the incentive program will come out of the one-time public safety dollars.
So it's just increased, like I said, for current employees and then the other half of that.
How much is that of that is driven by contract?
All of it. Oh, take that back. That we know of all of it. We don't have the unit contract nor will we have it anytime soon. So. I am budgeting based on what I'm anticipating, which would be the same as we did last year.
So the one fifty-four is contracted.
Um.
Will be, but it's not yet been decided.
Correct.
It's likely to be about that.
Yep. And again, in that one fifty-four is seventy-one thousand. So half of that is for another, that other half of the officer that we didn't budget for in twenty-four. So we hired at mid-year. We said we hire one at mid-year.
Eighty-three thousand salary increase is seventy-one thousands for the second officer we hired, the third officer we hired this year that.
Yes.
Will be hired halfway through the year.
That's correct.
That we knew we were hiring this year, knowing it would increase the cost next year.
You got it.
So that's a little better.
That's correct.
Well, it just doesn't mean that there's a hundred and fifty-four seller, salary increase.
Correct. No, there's not. It's only eight or three.
There's another half body there.
Yeah, correct. Yeah.
So total is one fifty-four of that seventy-one or seventy-two thousand is related to the other half of the individual. Emergency management decrease of thirteen thousand. That's just a reallocation of wages. So that actually went into police. So part of that one fifty-four is the decrease of thirteen thousand. So again, that's a little less. So eighty-three minus thirteen, we're at seventy thousand dollars for police salaries and wages. Um, that is because we're not going to allocate any time to emergency management anymore. It's just going to happen based on a function of police and fire. Fire department changes, the actual current changes in salaries and benefits for current employees is actually a negative thirty-eight thousand, three forty-four. How is that possible? It's because the part-time salaries is going down, um, along with those benefits because, um, the fire department is looking at hiring two new hires, two full-timers. That'll cost a hundred ninety-three thousand, eight eighty-four. And then another increase, other increases, increases our work comp insurance related to those two new hires. And the professional development, which would be continued development of our current firefighters and the two new ones. And that was discussed at the previous meeting in the work session.
That's a duty requirement.
Huh?
That's a duty requirement.
Yes, that is correct. Yep. So like I said, there's a decrease because we're not paying many part-time salaries. Um, public works department, a decrease of eighty-one thousand. These can be coupled directly below with the parks department, increase of ninety-two. That is a reallocation of current staff time. Overall, the changes are seventy-two thousand dollars reduction in out, public works, but eighty-eight thousand dollar increase in parks department. Overall, like I said, those pretty much net out to each other besides the increases related to the contracts. So those are all in the unit negotiated, um, changes. Professional services is the main one that went down along with some work comp. Um, Marty was kind enough to give some dollars back because he did not use the professional services for a couple of years and says, I don't really need those dollars to be able to operate my department. So we appreciate his willingness to give up some dollars. Changes in building and structures and motor fuels is ten thousand. Those are roughly five thousand dollars apiece. Not knowing the motor fuels is, will do is just a rough guess. Buildings and structures is moving, continued moving of the boneyard from the old public works department, which everyone loves looking at, to the new public works department. And creating more bays for putting, um, cinder blocks in bays to be able to put rock and mulch and stuff in. Otherwise, parks department major, again, increase ninety-two. Less non-major changes. I did want to note these as well because they do add up, but they're small. Overall revenues, decrease of seventeen thousand. That is, uh, because of the eighty, a hundred eighty-two thousand dollar, dollars worth of one-time dollars. And then, um, increases in other line items like government, state aids, so on and so forth that we received. Council increase of thirty-one fifty. That's subscriptions and memberships to different departments. Administration, central services and contingency.
Have we looked at those subscriptions? How often we utilize, and there's like.
We will, we will most certainly.
Okay. Cause that's a big budget. It looks like we're spending a lot on council. Every time I see it, I'm like, holy cow.
Yeah, we spend twenty-eight or twenty-nine thousand dollars a year. Right now it's twenty-five. It's proposed for twenty-eight or twenty-nine thousand for subscriptions and memberships. League of Minnesota Cities, Metro Cities, I ninety-four chamber, um, North Metro Mayors.
Mississippi.
Miss, yeah, Mississippi River Corridor. Um, between those five, I think that's like ninety-five percent of those costs. That's all I got. What I think we're missing really in this process is just additional savings for future projects. So we're just standing for questions that went way longer, but we also talked during it. So.
Yes, I think if you go to the last, I think there's three things that, that.
Um, sorry, this one?
The last one, the blue, what we're not talking. So we, there's no money set aside here for, so maybe I should clarify something. When it comes to parks and trails. All the parks and trails money comes from new development. There's no, like, we're not taxing anybody for parks and trails today, correct?
Um, so yes, however, there is one little bit that forty-five thousand dollars of park development costs. So that started because we had to do Donahue Dell's park. We realized we didn't have any money set aside for redoing.
Okay.
Parks. So we started setting their outside some money. It will do that. We are actually currently paying back the Donahue Dell's development, um, redo of the park. Um, with that forty-five and the thirty thousand dollars this year and forty-five thousand dollars next year. Um, but yeah, other than that, there is no other dollars for tax levy going to parks or trails. It's all coming from development.
You know, it's something we talked about before, like if, if we want to speed up, you know, L C Stevens appears a bit of a hot topic item, but if we want to speed up L C Stevens, we got to start allocating funds to do that. So I think that's something we should be thinking about. Same with trails. Like we're making movement on trails, but I think that there's some, so some opportunity on trails and then. Now if we, uh, Scott, you put this on Facebook, but you know, if we have this big thing coming up, I think it's twenty-eight, there's a bunch of money. Do we want to start saving for some of that? It's going to levy for all of it. Cause the longer we wait to start saving for some of that, less we're going to have saved up when time comes to do those big purchases that are coming up in the future. So we, we're not like saving for any long-term items. So.
Well, as if we continue to get hit with like an eighteen percent, we're, we're going to have a hard time doing that. So.
Yeah, because now all of a sudden you're going to talk about heading to the eighteen percent on top of it. And personally, I'm going to be at ten percent of the eighteen percent.
So you want to go back to a certain slide? You want to go back to a specific one? Do you want to talk about individual things? What would you like to do?
That very first one where you shown the general fund plus the payment plus the, um.
This, oh, boy, this one.
Yes. What is that capital equipment?
So capital equipment, so, uh, fifty thousand dollars of that is the allocation we used for the engine tender pumper that we purchased that we were going to allocate fifty thousand dollars. The two hundred fifty thousand dollar increase is related to, uh, new equipment that we're planning on in the future to be able to pay for those things. Um, every single year, we're roughly budgeting about a million dollars worth of new equipment, whether that's plot trucks, bucket loaders, fire items, um, police cars. Um, park equipment, mowers, all that stuff is about a mil, it's roughly a million dollars roughly.
You're going to start a savings account, basically.
Um, it's not a savings account. If it is a savings account, it's fifty grand or less a year. Unless we move, like I said, unless you move purchases one way or the other, then obviously that would.
Right.
Dictate those changes. That's correct.
The lease deal on the police cars that come, is accounted for in that.
That is accounted for in that four oh one capital equipment. That's correct.
But out of the three hundred, you're saying two fifty is for future purchases. I mean.
Um, but I mean, future purchases, I mean, like planned purchases that we have every single year for the rest of.
Yep.
On the CIP.
On the CIP long term.
How far out in the CIP are you planning that out for?
I think it's at least three or four years.
I thought you did that to buffer that.
Yep. So that's why I said.
Started like three years ago, I think.
Um, we tried to do it three years ago. I think we implemented a little bit two years ago.
Yeah.
But not as much as maybe had been planned. And then we'd just been kind of kicking the can a little bit down the road every time. And we've, we've inched it there, but not significantly.
Yeah. And I know over the years we put money in, um, and I, and I know we have, for example, those signs we put, we put money in and.
That's it. Yep. That's out of capital facilities. That's correct.
So I don't know. And the three hundred for payment, um, is that?
That's direction from the council to get to the one point five million dollars for the annual per year.
Um, okay.
So the, uh, we did the payment management study and said.
No, I, I remember that. I just thought that the MSA money got us most of the way to the one point five.
We don't get that until next, after next year. So twenty-five is the last year of that payback. And then twenty-six, we're able to capture that MSA dollars.
To be like a one-time thing then?
Um, nope. So those are annual costs. So we, we budgeted five years allocations.
Yeah, no, my point was is if we're going to get that money back next year, in twenty-six, we get the money back, we then maybe lower this in twenty-six to make up for the differential.
And we can. Yep.
If we want to get on track, this is what it takes to get on track to start next year to get on track for the roads.
Yep. So we are, like I said, so we provided the what's on track dollars. We can adjust and amend whatever needs to happen from council's perspective to make the dollars work and. So, so far the one thing I've heard is for sure the, the IT number with the, um, going online with BSNA or software program. We've heard that one as a comment. Is there anything else specifically?
Credit card fees we talked about too.
Yep.
Well, those are all, yeah.
I'm just going to make some, I'm just going to make some notes here for myself. Yeah, but I mean, those two, if we were to cut all of that together, that'd be almost a hundred thousand dollars, two things combined. So like there's, they're small, but they start adding up to.
They can, yep, yep.
Significant chunks of money in that case. I'm not saying we cut all the technology, but if we did, that, that plus the credit card fees would be.
Yeah, if we had to cut one, I'm going to recommend cutting the online BSNA before I'm going to recommend the website because the website is.
Yeah.
A serious user thing and also will be way better for residents to be able to access because they get lost on our website all the time too. Just, it would go basically to the, um, similar program like, it's not exactly, but Maple Grove, Rogers have like a quick links, six in the middle that are easy to click on and. Ours are a little harder to find because you have to scroll down to the bottom. And we tried to adjust it with the activity center program when, um, Teresa was here and we never actually fully implemented it and it's, again, you have to know code in order to adjust.
Mine is saying no one on our staff knows how to use our website as it stands. Correct.
We have one.
One person.
And that was because she was here when it was implemented.
Okay. And even that.
She's not a code person. She does not know code.
So getting to do exactly what I want to do.
She does graphic, she has a background in graphic design. So.
Cause your credit, your credit card fees, if you take them, then you, you speed it up on the camera thing. So it's kind of a wash.
Eat up on the camera thing.
Ten cameras, if, if that's, if that happens.
Oh, yep.
Yeah. What is the, the push for that camera stuff?
That is coming from the EDA.
Yeah. So Paul, I'd like your input on, on that. I know, I know it's one of the day I've heard in like every ED meeting for the last, I don't know how many months.
Exactly. Because businesses think that this is going to help them out.
How many communities around us have these, are using them?
Uh, Champlin is using them. Anoka's using them. Um, almost all of Anoka County cities are going to have them. Um, Maple Grove's using them. Rogers is installing them. Um, Corcoran, Maple Plain, Independence, all along the highway twelve corridor has them. Um, I believe Plymouth has them. Um, they're a very good investigative tool. Um, if any vehicle that comes into our city that somebody has a warrant or it's a stolen vehicle, stolen plates, anything like that, the officer automatically gets notified.
Same with Amber Alert license plates too?
Yep.
It's a really good thing on, uh, on Amber.
Yeah, that's, that's what I, yeah.
And that it's, it's big for businesses because it allows us to cover, um, cause they're the ones that are the majority of theft seeker. Um, so it allows us to be able to locate those vehicles.
Does it lower their insurance rates or save them any money at all?
I do not believe so. And if it comes down to it, I can, the gal from Flock would be willing to come in and give a presentation.
How many does Champlin have? Up to nine? I think that's what I heard at the ED meeting?
Yeah, nine or ten. And then I think Maple Grove's getting like thirty. Yeah, nine or ten, and then I think Maple Grove's getting like thirty of them.
And we're proposing.
Ten.
Ten?
Yep, it would cover every entrance into our city.
One thing I would like to try to get to, cause I think, well, at some point, I guess we'll, we'll have to talk about individual items. But what, what's not clear to me yet is, you know, kinda what's, what's baked into the budget, what, what we have to do. For example, increases that are related to the union contracts, um, you know, so salaries and benefits on. On existing employees that are covered there. You know, we have to do it, right? We're not, we're not negotiating a new deal for mid-contract and. I understand what you said about the, the police one being, you know, negotiated, it'll be what it is, so we can only assume a number there, but. We'll have to pay that, right? We're gonna agree to a contract and we'll, and we'll pay that. So we know that increases there. Whatever percent that is on current salaries and, and budgets. And there's other operational things, like the loss of the, the ARPA dollars. You know, that, that we have to account for, right? Cause we, we're not gonna have that revenue. And so there's a, kinda the, the must-do things, you know, that we, that we have no choice on. That's, that's this much of it. And then we've got the list of things that, that we wanna do. Right? Additional staff and, and beyond. And if you could break that out in a way for me.
I'd like to see that.
I asked, asked this question earlier, and assuming this is still true, cause I think this is the email from like a month and a half ago. The ARPA dollars were a hundred and eighty-two, six, six, five. A half an officer that we approved for this year. That then would become a full officer next year was seventy thousand.
Right, so that's an example of an increase where we've done it. We already approved it. We gotta, we've gotta allow in the budget.
And then the increase in salaries for staff already hired was two hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars. Which could see your other questions. Uh, there's probably, when I asked the question, those are the three things I got that were already approved this year for next year, which added up to like. Almost over five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, and so what I'd like us to be able to get to is, you know, those things that, that we have to do, we don't need to talk about. They're in there, but what is the, the cost of that? And then, you know, how far are we willing to swing above that? And, and live with the levy that we're going, going to approve ultimately and what's, what's in that. So there's sort of those two buckets for me.
Overall, a majority of this levy is, again, in the bucket of not have to. Again, then most of the, um, capital ones are all want-tos, or we wanna focus on those items overall. Um, there are some general fund ones that are obviously in there too. Again, roughly, rough numbers are probably around three hundred thousand or three hundred and fifty thousand, that's. You know, needs to, and then the rest are probably focuses on trying to figure out how we can make operations better here, overall, and, and how we can make those work. But I could most certainly get that to you. It's gonna be, you know, kinda, here's what we have to do and then. So the one thing that's gonna be hard, and what I'm gonna have to struggle with is the fire department, cause I need more direction from council, and I don't have a lot of time for that direction unfortunately. Is the have-tos for that is I'm gonna have to rerun numbers for, if we were to keep the current system. For increases in the budget next year, and I have to work with the chief on that, because I don't have those numbers, cause we didn't plan on that, uh, as in, in the budget. Um, but we can most certainly get those numbers for council to say, here's if we kept the current system, and then here's if we went to the. Duty crew system, cause again, there's some offsetting costs there. It's not a only increase on those.
Well, I thought you had listed some of those already.
Yeah, I listed those. So the ones that were in there were related to if we went to the two full-time duty crew model system.
Then you'd have the savings of thirty-eight.
Correct. You got it. But if I just say, okay, have to of, what do we have, current model and then increases? Cause we're gonna have an increase in revenue or expenditures related to having more part-time staff. So I just don't have those numbers directly, and I can figure those out.
Yeah, I think that'd be useful to see what we have to versus the whole thing.
Sure.
Cause I definitely have a problem with the whole thing.
Sure.
At some point, we should talk to about, um, the temp fund.
Sure.
There's a lot of money sitting there that could possibly be, you know, weaned out for capital projects.
Yes, I would recommend, if we're gonna do anything with those dollars, I would recommend using them for one-time purchases or capital purchases versus ongoing operations, just because it's easier for. Budgeting purposes, um, which I can agree with. I don't know what the.
I mean, for example, the, the, I mean, I, I'm not saying that this would be a good idea or bad, but pavement. It might even, you may even argue it was in the spirit of the temp fund. So, I mean, uh, you know, stuff like that, I think.
Yeah, three hundred thousand saves you three point eight percent, which means you're gonna have a tax rate decrease next year, just cut that one item. The three hundred thousand dollars, you're gonna have a decrease next year in the tax rate.
How much the money that we were talking about earlier that we get back now in twenty-six, how much is that?
MSA?
Yeah, how much is that?
I'm not gonna say a number, cause I don't know enough.
Approximately, is it three hundred thousand more or less?
No, well, that's probably, yeah, it's probably three ninety-two, I think. That was last year. Three hundred ninety-two.
So, cause my concern is we offset a reoccurring cost with the one-time thing, but if we're gonna get money in twenty-six that then.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I wanted to make sure, cause I didn't know what the dollar amount was. Cause what I, what I, what I struggle with is when we use. One-time money to offset reoccurring costs.
Oh, sure.
Because we're setting ourselves up for the, like, for the following.
Yep.
I know they do. Uh, that's okay. The county has a lot of things I don't like either, so, uh, just cause they doesn't mean I don't want to. I just, I, that's, so yeah, I would say in this case then. I could get on board with that and say.
You also have great old money coming in next year too.
We do not. Not till twenty.
Oh, twenty-six.
Seven.
Yeah, it's twenty-six.
So, that leads me to a more fundamental question around, um. Around our value. So the county does the, does the assessment. They do the, the number ba- to give us our. Our total tax base, right?
You got it.
Houses that, that come in new, so we built two hundred and change.
Two hundred and one.
Houses last year.
Yep.
Now, we don't get full tax value out of that in year one. That comes in over a couple of years, doesn't it? Just, just lot and some improvement, then finally full meal.
Tends to jump. It goes from lot into house.
It tend, yeah. It depends on when the house is being built and how much percentage is done as of January second. So on January second, the testers go around the city and task how, what percentage they're done with. And that's where people come in and argue the valuations of the houses with, okay, I think it was this percentage done and not this percentage done, and then they'll say. But they're typically, typically two years.
Pro- so the total tro- property value for the city, is it phased in over a couple of years like that? The county uses those numbers to say in year one, the taxable value is this and.
Yep.
Okay.
They tend to be lagging about two years.
We're not looking at last year's houses in any meaningful way. We're looking at two years ago that are coming online now.
I mean, a portion of those is obviously.
Next year's gonna be.
Yeah, so I mean, again, so if you look at the two hundred homes we built last year, I would say half of those come in this year. And then half of those come in next year, so we get half of the house in twenty-five and then half of the, the other half of the house in twenty-six. Um, for valuations, to your point.
Sure. But more were built in twenty-two than in twenty-three. So we've got a bigger number coming in, so that's sixteen percent increase in, in value.
And that's the new construction number of the fourteen point something.
Two years ago than it is last year.
That's correct. Yep. We got a portion of them coming in for this year, but again, most of them are gonna be.
And if we get projects that kinda fall apart, like, seems like we've gotten a couple of them now that, a commercial project.
Oh, yep.
So, we just had, uh, what was that I seen in the last one? Yeah, the, the one you added to consent today.
Oh, that's Skinnell?
Yeah, Skinnell apparently. I didn't realize that they'd.
They're, they have not built yet. I, I don't know what they're doing.
Yeah, alright.
So any final closing remarks before we, anything else? If you have something else for the budget, please send me an email. Happy to provide those back. It will provide everything with the have-tos to everybody, all the council members. So you have all that. And then I got notes, Scott's ten percent number, that's what I got so far. And then a couple of notes about IT and credit card fees.
I, I, I think I'm gonna be much closer to that number than the eighteen, so.
Okay.
I don't know if you, but you already got a lot of that information, right?
Yep, yeah, we got some of it.
Yep.
Yep.
Alright.
Anything else specifically? Otherwise, we will move on to the, take a short break quick and then move on to the.
Is this gonna be a reoccurring first mini of the month budget conversations now?
Okay, we're gonna adjourn if there are no objections? I was gonna hold out.